Requesting person, can we send a request at any time? So if, let's say, let's put it back in the employee context. If an employee has asked for a closed session because it's going to be an evaluation or a discipline or whatever, and you're properly going to closed session and you're discussing that, that employee could say, "You know what? I rescind." At that point, the closed session needs to conclude and you two go back to open session.
Should I have been instructed of that? See, being ignorant of the law and nothing to hide, you know, that was an over an hour-long meeting. So, you know, and I was never told that I could, when I got furious, that I could say, "Hey, I've had enough of this kind of treatment."
Well, that's a hard one, too. It is, and you know, these are laws and I'm pretty good on knowing the law and what all the courts have said in competing cases. But again, I'm not your city attorney and we have 530-some cities and villages in this state and everyone does it a little differently and that's not bad. And we keep trying to keep the legislature from trying to create something that one side gets all. So if there are variations and you're working towards, you know, a reasonable combination of your community, that's important to the council. I really hasn't tried to...
Our city attorney is adamant that anyone can call for a closed session.
That's absolutely true. That part you'll agree on.
But if you're being reprimanded, you can say no.
When I say "anyone," I mean any on the council.
Correct.
Not just the accused. I thought that was protection from the accused to go into closed session so that it wouldn't be made public. I'm showing my ignorance about it, but that's...
Well, let me back up one.
Okay.
So again, if requested by the named person, and I think from what you said, Robert, someone thought it's comments that you made or whatever was consent or a request because you felt that there was nothing you worried about, and the council agrees to hold a closed session on da-da-da-da-da, then it is appropriate. It would not have to be you making the motion.
But he also would have the right to say, "No, I don't want to do that."
I think so, yeah.
And that would have to be a body fact. You couldn't like...
This is the one you don't need. If it's in a contract, the person says, "No, no."
Well, this was the sitting city council member.
Well, the contracting is in regard to employee, maybe it is a requirement. And that kind of ties the hands of the council. If it's a contract requirement for an employee, it may be that the council doesn't have a choice. But this is mainly pertaining in regard to the council member. Well, I don't know what else I can say. Other than I'm not trying to run up your legal bills, but it's a good idea to have your city attorney around as much as possible.
But it's probably a pretty safe fact to say, "No one can be forced to go into a closed session."
Well, I guess that's true, but if it's completely unrelated, then you have some duties as a council person to be a part of the closed session.
Sure, but if you're saying, "I don't want to be reprimanded in a closed session. I feel threatened, I feel whatever it is," you can say, "I'm not doing this."
I'm not trying to evade your question, but I would say that it would be a properly convened closed session for one of those purposes out there if requested by the named person and the council agrees, which is a little bit different than I was saying. So I guess it would be a...
So if the person named says, "I don't want to do this," it doesn't happen?
Well, interesting. My thought on this is if the named person doesn't want to go into closed session...
They need to say that.
They need to say that, and then council still has the option of talking about it in an open session.
Right. Absolutely.
So if the only idea is that it would be open to discussion in either an open session or a closed session, depending on...
But that, you know, I'm going to shut the door and scream that you threaten you. You don't have to do that.
See, that's not one of the six exceptions.
Got it.
The point would be basically if the person being reprimanded didn't request it, then there could be no closed session. Discipline would probably then continue in open.
Right.
But there must be a request in addition to the vote to go into a closed session. Is that how you state it?
I think it's stated.
Yeah. Well said.
I could have asked you a ten minutes. Okay. Da-da-da-da-da, we're ready. Okay, yeah, may rescind at any time, that's important. What do you do if an employee is criticized in a public conference by a council member? Judgment call, you know, should you go immediately into closed session? Not necessarily. What if the employee isn't there, somebody is complaining about the PPW director and he or she is not at the council meeting, you know? It's kind of a judgment call. Okay, here's a second exception to when you can go into closed session. And again, this makes sense. The legislature's got some of this stuff where they should have strategy and negotiation sessions in regard to collective bargaining. So if you're in that sort of a situation, it makes sense that you can go into closed session because you need to do that, otherwise you're not going to have a bargaining position. It would be open. That's not a good place to be if you're bargaining. So that makes sense. The third one is if you want to purchase or lease real property, up until the time you have an option, as if you're discussing what the city is willing to pay for real property, you watch the bargaining position. Interestingly, when you want to sell city property, at this point in time, that's not covered in this exception, which is weird. There was a law that was in the legislature that picks that, but it didn't make it through in the last session. I hope it's being advised. But if you're thinking about purchasing or leasing real property, you can discuss that in closed session. Or if you can consult with your, or an attorney, your city attorney or another attorney about specific pending litigation, only if an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect. The real key on this one in this report case is just because you've got the city attorney or an attorney that you want to bring into closed session, that doesn't make it a free call. It needs to be in regard to specific pending litigation. Your city attorney will help you a lot in determining, you know, when is this appropriate or not appropriate. If you are looking to hire someone, you can go into closed session to discuss or consider contents of an application for employment if the candidate requests. Typically, candidates will request confidentiality, but the interviews need to be done in public. And media seems to be okay with this, as long as they, you know, once you get it down to the finalists and then you have all the interviews in public, that seems to work pretty well. That's the way the unique search process works in this. Here are a couple of practical applications in regard to job applicants. Let me just do that one. And the sixth and final one is to consider material exempt from discussion disclosure by a state or federal statute. A good example of that is FOIA, that's a state statute. If you're considering material that is exempt under FOIA, for instance, a written, not an oral, but a written opinion of your city attorney due to attorney-client privilege, then you can discuss that in closed session. So if your city attorney is giving you a written opinion on something, you can discuss that in a closed session. As I indicated, this is, I've heard city attorneys say that at some point the council then wanted to discuss X, Y, Z after they discussed what they meant a closed session for, and the city attorney said, you know, "You cannot do that and it pertains to a meeting."
I have a question. So when you say a written legal opinion, would this need to pertain to, say, this water bottle is on this property line and so it would be my opinion that it's 50 percent yours? Or would it also be something like, "I think you did a great job on that"? Would both of those be included? Or would it be just one? Is it... We've gotten in a lot of city situations.
I think I would rely on your city attorney if he feels that his written opinion is something that is qualified for this, I think you can ask him and he'll tell you and I'd rely on that. I haven't heard that sort of differentiation.
It's okay.
And you're not going to want to pay him to write written opinions on stuff that's not really important, it seems to me. So, I don't know.
I have no explanation.
I just, I don't, I wouldn't think that would end up being a problem. Security plans, obviously, you need to discuss that. Oh, very, okay, here's a call in a closed session. First, you need to have an open meeting, a properly convened open meeting, that's step one. Then there needs to be a motion, a second, an adoption of the motion to go closed session. Now, as I mentioned, there is a difference in how many votes it takes, depending on which exception it is. So, if it's a disciplined personnel situation or for collective bargaining, you need a roll call, I mean, you need a majority if it, those two exceptions. The other four exceptions, it takes a two-thirds majority. So it's a higher standard to get to closed session. Discipline, a personnel evaluation or collective bargaining takes a majority vote, a simple majority vote, and a roll call is advisable, and you have to say why you're running a closed session, you have to state the exception. The other four takes a super majority, two-thirds majority. And Linda should put in the minutes, the roll call vote, and the purpose of running the closed session. If you are leading the closed session, the AG recommends a motion to end the closed session with a majority vote and a closing. So, in the circumstance that you described, you would hope that you could get a majority to lead the closed session.
And if you can?
Well, if you feel that, you know, for your safety or sanity, if you need to lead, then I guess you can do it.
And hopefully that won't happen again.
I'm sure of that.
But I was told at the time that I didn't have an alternative.
I wouldn't think so. This of course creates a legal conundrum that only a lawyer would care about. But notice I said, "All actions have to be taken in an open session"? That's an action. A vote can lead to closed session. What do you do? We're stuck. No. The AG, I think correctly says, "It is a decision, but not one that effectuates or formulates public policy." So this is the one decision you can make in a closed session that's okay. All of your other votes and decisions need to be in an open session. You need to have a separate set of minutes. Linda does not have to take them, you could designate someone else if for some reason you wanted to do that. You need to have the date time placed, members present, absent, the perks of the closed session. Audio tapes of the closed session are considered part of the minutes.
I would just kind of feel that in practice, that's all everybody's putting in the closed meeting minutes.
Yeah.
And so they are having very often excusing the clerk, because you're only going to put in what's required, anybody could do that.
I was just going to say, on the school board, we, the school board secretary always kept them in at two o'clock.
Right, it's what you're saying.
Right, as opposed to the outside person.
Yeah. Exactly. Because this is all that's required, and this is all that anybody's putting in, because all you can do is put them in the vault, shred them. Oh, sorry.
So our record, we're going to be recording, video recording any closed meetings that we have and we have to store them?
You don't have to.
We've chosen to.
Oh, you do?
So they're stored separately, we live in a most, quote, "cold call." And I guess we have to, I guess the next day, whoever, Linda and the city manager, take that clip and store it for us, am I correct?
And that way it can be viewed by members of the council that were involved in that session at a future time.
If we need to review that, it's a person.
That gives you a really good horse. Whatever, we're almost there. There's an AG opinion that says that disclosure may not be made of these closed session minutes, even if the person requesting closed session subsequently wages or causes requests to consent to disclosure. But to back KoCo's point, she didn't have a much better sense of it than I, because she was a real municipal official. I think, but I think the minutes in closed sessions are quite brief. You probably don't want a ton of information in them, so they're very succinct.
So if the minutes, I know the minutes are sealed in an envelope and put in the vaults and they're destroyed a year and a day later. If we're going to be applying to our closed sessions, those shouldn't be available to anyone who cares. The council should not be able to work the phones either. They should be sealed as well, and then destroyed?
Well, I would say, and I would agree with what the attorney general says, is that if Molly is absent from the closed session that you guys have next week, and she's on account, comes back into town and wants to look at the minutes of the closed session, Molly should have the right to do that, if you'll take two. You have, I think, an obligation to make sure that the minutes and the tape are protected. I would suggest that you, you know, you'd want to have whichever council member come down and look at those minutes, you know, meeting in office and so, you know, you have control on it. But they may be viewed, I think, by other members of the council who didn't happen to be there, or for that matter, or for whatever reason.
I have a further question on that point. I have a further question on that point. So the viewing of any closed session materials would be limited to council members who were sitting at the time of that closed session, and it would be only if they were absent from that meeting, is that correct?
I think even if you're at the meeting, you could still review it.
Okay.
I think the more interesting question is, well, what if, what if you just got on council and the most important decision you think that the city had made was six months ago, and you need to have a sense of why the city made that choice? Why on earth didn't the city decide to buy you fire? Then, I don't know, the AG opinion on this, I don't believe covered that. And I think if they haven't been destroyed, and Linda's correctly destroyed a year and a day after, if they haven't been destroyed, it would seem to me that it really helps with your understanding of how the city got to a particular point in its policy formulation process, that maybe it's valuable for you to see those minutes. But I would ask that of your city attorney. I don't think there's, I don't think there's case law, and I don't believe the attorney general's opinion, which I think is on the next slide. Yeah, that particular AG opinion says that it's okay for a member to inspect, you know, copy that the, copying that is necessary by identity. But anyway, I don't think it addressed, you know, somebody that wasn't currently on council at that time. I think that's a judgment call, we agree, and I do my city attorney's on that.
It would be totally appropriate, though, for us on council to review those for clarification of like what the attorney said, of what?
I think so. Again, it could be incredibly succinct, I'm not sure.
No, the video.
Oh!
We're taking video.
Yeah, okay. I think so.
Which is sort of the purpose.
Yeah.
Is to be, in case there's a question later about what exactly was said, recommended, discussed, whatever.
Yes, but KoCo and I were having a conversation about a completely different community earlier in regard to their minutes, and they were trying, not a closed session, just in general, and they were trying to do too much in their minutes, which then ended up being like a whole nother possible argument among council members. And I guess my...
You didn't say what was done, not what was said.
Sure.
All YouTube that I've also learned over the years, like, as for the council lines, that's unfortunate.
Well, and I would advocate, that's why we videotaped and put it on YouTube, because that's now available. If you want to see what council said, it's available.
Well, that's part of transparency.
Right.
I'm just, I'm not doing a good job, but I'm just saying, you know, be careful that you don't, you know, like, walk yourselves into ongoing disagreements because it's an interpretation or something that is on video. At some point in time, you guys got to make a decision and keep moving forward.
Sure.
If you're always debating, you know, what city attorney may or may not admit by something and, you know, if he's like any other attorney, if he's describing gray real well, not black and white.
Sure.
Because that's what we're trying to do. So, you know, you have to make a decision and move forward.
Yeah. Ours is more like, "We missed something. This person was talking, that person was talking, I didn't hear that, I didn't understand that."
Okay. Okay, here's my second attempt to do it. OMG, did I just add any comments?
Bad.
It's important, these guys, not only went and did it, they probably worked on jobs that I don't know, jobs that didn't survive when, you know, everything passed, but in any event, computers are the size of this room, they want these things, these are incredibly important. Nobody calls me anymore, but only emailing. Generally speaking, the younger the staff person, the more they want to email you. You could have a office next door, they'll send you fourteen emails, or they'll have a thirty-second conversation with you. So, I try to live with it. What can I say? Be careful with new faces technology. If email or texting is used by members of a public body for substantive discussions about matters pending before the year of development, this may be viewed as a meeting of the OMA. Keep it, the kind of an act in mind. Did the members of your council just passively receive some emails or texts, or did they actively exchange emails showing an intent to deliberation? None of those deliberations are, it's a very broad definition. So when I was trying to say, "Well, the manager's sending an email to each one of you, that's no problem. If Perry is sending an email to each one of you, that's no problem. What if you send, reply to all, forward and go back to everyone?" What if it's a couple of you sent to a couple more, and then somebody inadvertently hits a reply to all, and have you created a situation where you are exchanging emails which are tapping off to deliberations? Are you deliberating towards making a decision? Are you deliberating towards making a decision? Okay, and here's the grass I'm proud of. Council member or manager, see that one way to, sorry, I didn't have enough council members. That's not a problem. Did I just hit it all off? Oh, yeah, okay, here's, we got, see, you have arrows on both sides, so if the manager sends each one of you something, and you send something back, still probably not a problem. Notice the color has changed for the secondary. Okay, so now two is sending something back to the council member who sent it out, plus two is sending something to each one of his or her colleagues. Are you starting to, are you making a decision by this exchange of emails? Are you deliberating whether or not you're going to buy any fire truck or not by exchanging these emails? And then this, we got another complication with the red. Maybe just two people start sending things back and forth. The point is, is that if you're exchanging emails, whether it's on your smartphone or your city computer or your home computer, if they are issues that should be before the city council, you may be making a decision. You may have inadvertently convened a meeting, that you are, as a body, maybe it's inadvertent, you didn't need to send it to everybody, if you started exchanging viewpoints, and on yourselves, may have just convened a meeting, a virtual meeting, a blogosphere, you didn't need it. Be very, very careful of that. The mayor of the city attorney found out that texts are a problem. This is another question that I like to usually, sometimes I get like really huge differences of opinion among council members in the same community. And it's a little bit similar to whether you can look at the minutes on an open, of a closed session, it's kind of a similar question. Can you conduct a meeting by conference call or interactive television? Some say yes, some say no. Some very good city attorneys say that you can have a council member phone in. Some very good city attorneys say that no, you have to be physically present to participate in the meeting. So there's no answer yet. The legislature, by the way, has a bill pending, and it was passed the House, it's now in the Senate, and it says, "A meeting is not open to the public" I mean, it's not an open meeting, a public open meeting. If a public member of, of a member of the public right casts his or her vote about being physically present. I'm not sure what is motivating the legislature to do this, but it's interesting. And it's through the House. It was introduced last year and it didn't pass, it's been introduced again, and it's already through the House and it's been into the Senate. So you're going to have to be careful. There are different gradations of this, and I don't know what your practice is here. If Dan is sick and just can't be at the meeting, what should, what, what could you do? Well, some communities would say that Dan could, you could put him on a speakerphone and he could be counted for purposes of a quorum, and he could vote. Other communities would say, "No, you need to physically be here to either be counted for a quorum or to vote." Now, you could listen in, presumably. I don't think there's any problem with that, but that person who is not physically present, maybe he or she should be counted for purposes of a quorum. Again, there is no, there is no right answer on this one yet. Very good city attorney took a different ways. This so happens in Michigan, we supported this piece of legislation last year. Our policy committee, I wasn't at the minute, meeting, but our policy committee said, "Yeah, we, we think that's a good idea." The county's association, county's association, is very much against this. And in part, it's because, take the UP, there are county's in the UP that are biggest counties. In the middle of January, it is not easy for those folks.
Right.
Across huge county's in January, and they say, plus they say, "Look, it's a twenty percent, everybody loves this communication technology, why can't we, why can't we just participate by conference call?" There is a case, that case analyst found there, it was part of the answer, it was, it was a state administrative agency and a court case said, "Yeah, it's okay to participate by call." Three-person administrative board out on the Kansas City Council. The AG says that, you know, maybe yes, maybe no, but clearly it's better if it's interactive television. So the attorney general would say, "Yeah, it's probably okay if it's interactive television." Some city attorneys won't even buy that. We'll see what the legislature does with this legislation. I will fashion up the thing that I think is important to have for you guys here, because people out here can see their facial expressions, they know a lot about what's going on. I don't know the stat, KoCo knows the stat, but there is a lot of scientific evidence as to how much communication is verbal and how much is non-verbal. And it's a huge percentage is non-verbal. I feel better because KoCo is smiling and not in your head, so I feel that, but you know that. So, non-verbal communication is incredibly important, and if you can't see the person on the council, then how do you know?
Well, I think if you started doing video presence, more people would be like, "I don't have to be there, I just can't coo in this video land."
It's a tough question, I mean, because everybody is busy.
Do you have a question, Mike?
One each, guys. Well, I could be helpful. Please. I guess my question is, on this emailing back and forth between council members and other ID directors and stuff, aren't we opening up the can worms like Hillary Clinton had in the fact that these emails could be subject to FOIA requests? I mean, if they're going to, if they're going to conduct business through emails, I as a citizen, not a department head, but I as a citizen can file a FOIA request? I as a citizen, not a department head, but I as a citizen can file a FOIA request, and, and, so you, you want to be extremely careful of what is in them emails.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, you're correct. And that's, you know, part of the, when I talk about the ballot and FOIA presentation, that's one of the reasons I talk about the ballot. Try to impress council members that their FOIAs, I mean, their, their emails are subject to FOIA. And it is probably true that it doesn't make a difference if it's on your personal smartphone,
Yep.
or on the city computer-
Yep.
or your home computer.
Yep.
That was another one of my points, being on the fire department, we were told many years ago, well, with the invention of the camera on the smartphone, if we're at a scene and it's suspicious, and we take pictures of that scene, do not put it on your phone, download it to a computer or something, because they can, they can seize that smartphone for evidence and/or whatever in a court of law. So, you've lost everything on that phone, it's subject to whomever it were.
FOIAs have to be content specific, am I correct?
Yes.
Like, they can't say, we would like an email off of your personal email that you directed, you know, I directed to Rose, we would like to take your laptop and look at all of your email.
Well, they can get, they could convince a court that there's a likelihood that there are emails among city officials that are subject to FOIA. This is all part of discovering one thing or the other. It's conceivable that a court, and they have done it periodically, they will say, you know, not only whatever is here at the city hall, the server here, that it's possible that they could say, it's your home computer, and then you have to hire somebody, which costs a lot of money, go through that, and, and pull out, like you mentioned with Secretary Clinton, and pull out those things that are subject to FOIA.
Right.
Because they had everything.
Yeah.
And now they're deciding which they want to keep.
Yeah. Now, had you-
Well, she turned over everything.
But, because she had to.
Oh, okay.
But it's plausible, but, I mean, it's a good practice to have, if you, if you're using your home computer for email, for city purposes, at least it's a good idea to have two accounts, one city, one personal. That helps you a little bit.
Right.
But anything that you're doing on city business, you need to be concerned that it is-
It's FOIA.
-subject to FOIA.
It's totally FOIA.
And it's, and it's, and this is the Howell school case. Generally, the law as it is right now, is, I'm old as per, in, feels, that's, it just came out, but generally the law is that it's more about what you're saying than doing, rather than where it is.
Right.
If you're exchanging purely personal emails, even if it's on a city system, that may not be subject to FOIA. Conversely, if you are on your home computer discussing what is clearly city business, that is subject to FOIA.
Yeah, I was surprised by the teacher case with the teacher school, where they were having personal emails on school email, and it wasn't, like, they couldn't take them.
Because the court said, even though it's school property, school, non-school teachers, if they were purely personal emails, not subject.
But- Yeah.
The court also said, it was dicta, but the court also said, which means it wasn't part of the rule, you have to rule it, if, if the case had been about whether those teachers could be disciplined because they broke the rule, clearly broke the rule.
Right.
If that is what the case was about, then those emails would have been-
Right.
Would have been subject, because it was a public purpose.
But it wasn't the content, that wasn't what was-
Exactly.
The request of the case.
Exactly, yeah.
So, on a case where there is a pending decision to be made from a previous meeting to the next meeting, it wouldn't be proper for one council member to email the other council member about how disappointed they were in their decision discussion made?
Well, that's certainly a very, very fact-specific question. I think if, if you're purely expressing, um, you know, the disappointment, you know, maybe, but if, if you are, if you are taking a step towards, you're ready for making a decision, that's part of the deliberative process to make a decision, then I think I'd be concerned.
I think there's going in all the facts from the point.
Well, if it's purely one-way, or maybe it's not a problem, but, but what if you start getting some, some back and forth? That's, that's a real big problem. But, but what if, what if, if you send out something, it's just your expression, and you've got maybe some more facts in it, and then, and then somebody else sends out something? And if not back and forth, if each one of you sends out just a one-way communication commenting on about, well, we didn't quite, you know, make it all work? And, and have you, in effect, is that a meeting? I mean, aren't you making a decision by those independent one-way expressions of, of your point of view on it? I think you should be cautious about doing that.
That's what I think, too.
Okay, where are we? We gotta get moving. Um, I hope there's a much better presenter than I am anywhere. Um, so, remember, committees and subcommittees, those are subject to the OMA. If it's truly, truly, truly advisory, they're not subject, but be real careful of that. Um, the courts are real clear about this, as is the attorney general.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, by an advisory committee, you mean that that body doesn't make any decision? They would simply bring it back to the council and advise carefully?
Correct. Let me tell you what happened in East Lansing. Uh, the, the city needed to have a new, I think there's a lot of, it doesn't matter, it was a public building. Uh, they got a blue-ruined committee together, no council members on it, no administrators on it. Uh, a really good group, people, uh, charge was to identify who should be, I think it was their actual term. Um, this blue-ruined committee got together, they discussed a lot of things, they had a lot of meetings, they probably met with different architects and engineers and whoever provided the term and all this stuff. And then they, they gave a recommendation to the city ultimately. Court said that it was violation of the Open Meetings Act. It caused, what had occurred, in the court's view, the real decision was made by this supposedly advisory committee. Yes, the city council ultimately said, yes, we want some attention to it, or whoever, I don't know. But they said there was a, a delegation of authority from the council to this advisory committee, even though this advisory committee had no council members, no administrators on it, just citizens. There was a delegation of authority. So, who really made the decision? That group did. They didn't do it in an open meeting, went to the city council, the city council just rubber stamped what the advisory committee did. Now, there's a lot of politics involved, I'm sure. But the public felt and the court agreed that it was an important public decision that was made by this group of people who met, not in an open session, I'm sure it was conveyed, or it was articulated, portrayed as they met in secret, and they made this big decision, and then the city council didn't do anything, they just rubber stamped it. That was held to be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So, that delegation of authority is very important. Um, I already mentioned what's called a destructive forum. Again, if it was not in the law, the courts, the Supreme Court has put it in the law. It is a, where the court can infer or imply that there was an actual forum. So, if you've got less than a forum meeting here, you've got less than a forum meeting here, if the court feels that you're trying to get around the act by doing this less than a majority sub-meeting, mini-meeting, round robin, whatevers, the court can say, can infer, imply that you actually had a physical forum present, violated the Open Meetings Act. Um, and again, delegation of authority is, is awfully important. And this is the Porter Regent's case, this is sort of the language from the, well, by the way, University of Michigan, Michigan State, and, and Wayne State University went to the legislature and got themselves a document after this, just said.
And just saying that it's back out there, that they wanted to back send it.
Coco used to run Wayne State University.
Go Tatters!
Uh, right in this last, anyway, uh, so, this, this is an important, uh, case, and the language is real clear. The court really thought that the University of Michigan was circumventing the act, and it was. This is very early on, um, nineteen seventy-nine. So, it's two years after the act really happened, so, you know, everybody was testing it out. Court painted out hard on the University of Michigan. Um, and this is another case, the Oakland Houchip case. The court said, here, there's no evidence, the house, the house delegated any of this government or proprietary authority to the subcommittee. So, in that case, which I think frankly is a little bit shaky, the court said it was okay. But that's the key, is they delegate. Um, what happens if you have violated the Open Meetings Act? Whatever you did may be nullified. It could be invalidated. Now, you can go back in an open meeting and pass it again, but it gets invalidated. Uh, it is a criminal misdemeanor penalty for violation of the Open Meetings Act, and it is a criminal prosecution on board right now. Uh, three council members in a small community in southwest Michigan, unless something has changed in the last two or three weeks, are being prosecuted by the Department of Prosecution. And it is a real tough situation, it's very expensive for them personally. Very expensive for them personally. Um, we already talked about many reasons why it's not a good idea to disseminate certainly the minutes. That's a, that is a criminal violation or even information violation, I think. How are we doing?
Good.
All right. I've got, these are some real life cases, these are ripped from pages of law books. Um, let me go through truthfully, I'm a bad or even, you know, stop me if, if we're going on too long. This is the Ishgane case. This is where a mayor contacts each council member, and wants to find out his or her position on city manager. There was a problem with the city manager, and there's gonna be a vote, on whether he should be retained at that meeting. The mayor conducted a poll of the council members. Question was, was that a violation of the Open Meetings Act? This is where I say courts, I think, get it right in the sense, once they look at all the facts, I think they have a sense of what's going on. The court said here, it was not a violation, because there was no attempt in the mayor's conversations with each, with each council member to discuss the situation for it, or to change any council member's position to city manager. It was a one-on-one, called up each one individually, and did not share, my understanding of facts, did not share with any of them what any other one had said. It was like just a poll. And that's, be limited, said the facts, the court concluded it was okay, it wasn't a violation. And as I indicated, it would have been a different decision if the evidence indicated discussions between the mayor and each council member had gone beyond the statement of position of the council member or the managers. So, they weren't deliberating towards making a decision. If, if the mayor had started sharing what number one, or two, or three had said with number four, then I think it would have been totally different. I think at that point, they would have been deliberating towards making a decision, and would have been a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Um, and these are the answers to that. I mentioned it, the U of M case, the Wyoming case, uh, this is what actually happened on, into those cases. The Wyoming case, it's a two-day period, lunch meeting, revolve, with a meeting having a sufficient number of council members attending to constitute a forum. The court found the meeting designed to avoid the OMA, and it was a destructive forum, and it violated the Open Meetings Act. Again, the Wyoming case was very early, about the same time as the U of M case. Okay, here's another question. Uh, I think I mentioned this before, what if, um, you've got several members of the public body, not for a forum? Uh, not, I haven't said this, remain after an open meeting to engage in formal discussion? So, council, bam, the cattle comes down, the council meeting's over, you do what you normally do, you hang around a little bit, um, talk. Um, is that a, um, some people in the public were aware of that? They decided that the council had violated the Open Meetings Act, is that a violation? This case, no. The court listened to, reviewed all the facts, and said, yep, they were council members, they were in, I think it was a city, I know it's the Dickinson County Board, Library Board, whatever, they were in the office of that public entity, they were members of that board, but there was no deliberation by a forum of remaining board members. So, the court looked at the facts and said, they were continuing to discuss, you know, matters before the public body. Maybe they were discussing, uh, the fall, Dickinson County, that GP, uh, they were discussing the fall colors, uh, or the high school football game, whatever. So, they weren't deliberating towards making a decision of something before the public body, it was okay. It's the same thing if you're all up at a high school football game, and all at the Kroger store. You know, just because you're all there and talking to one another, doesn't mean that you are conducting public business to create or make a decision. Again, be, be aware of the perception of you all being together in such a public place, or private. One of my all-time favorite mayors, um, had a running battle with them, which I will not name. Uh, he had a running battle with the, the local TV reporter, who was always trying to get him. And the practice of the council was to, after the council meeting, was to adhere to the local bar. And I, I gotta believe that they weren't especially city business, it was like beer. But regardless, the local reporter was gonna get him, so he staked out the bar, because he knew that was really gonna go. So, he had all the cameras ready, and once they all got in, he jumped out of his van, with his cameras and lights, and went rushing into the bar to try to catch the mayor, you know, having a beer in, in the bar with council members. The mayor knew what was, why they died, and knew what was gonna happen, so he saw it coming. Went into the men's room, climbed out, went into the men's room, and had, had his, his, you know, the priesty, and they, waiting outside, you'd call him on the cell phone, and they rushed off before the guy from channel twelve, I believe, could capture it on video. Anyway, uh, don't get involved in that sort of situation.
Yeah.
Um, Coco, you like this one. Should a council member who is abstaining from voting on a subject due to a conflict of interest participate in the pre-vote discussion on the subject? Okay, you've got a conflict, everybody knows it, you've announced it, it's, you know, there's no secret here. You've got a conflict, so you shouldn't be voting on this. What, what should you do? Should you remain on the dais? Should you remain on the dais and not be a part of the discussion? Should you leave the dais and sit here? Should you leave the dais and, and leave the room? Can you do that?
Well, what's most common is to stay immediately when the subject comes up. I have a conflict of interest, and I will not vote, stay on this, and then stay and see. However, attorneys, when the district court comes to get their funds, and there are attorneys sitting on the council, they typically, of course, they like to use the word recuse, rather than abstain, and they recuse immediately, woman. So, it's all the way across, it's just that you can't be there to, I mean, you can't say anything.
So, you should not, you just take the discretion.
No.
You know, you can't vote, and you shouldn't discuss. If you do anything else, it's up to you. Um, and, and this is, this case in the listserv, and as, as Coco mentioned, um, I think that, yeah, recuse. So, which means declaring the conflict, stating the decision, recuse, and then removing himself, and all the other reasons leaving that decision. So, whether or not to leave the room is another question, I guess. Uh, another question, a closed session school superintendent presented the union's total for a three percent increase. Uh, there was discussion, uh, this is a closed session, a properly called closed session. Uh, this superintendent said, the union wants a three percent increase. There was discussion, the board chair then asked each board member to state as specifically as possible where they stood about the proposal. One board member who sued, the plaintiff objected, said that was a violation of the OMA, in effect, they were having a vote in a closed session. That's what this person was saying. Uh, the chair said, it was not about just eliciting opinions. So, there was a shouting match.
The equivalent of a poll?
Excuse me?
The equivalent of a poll?
Straw poll.
Straw poll.
Uh, the meeting broke up after the shouting match, and the board chair noted that the majority did not support the three percent increase. So, he did take the straw poll, one member had left after the shouting match. Um, question, is this out of violation of the OMA, because we acted in a closed session, rather than an open session? In this case, and this is, I think this is a close call, court said no, it wasn't a violation. The OMA must be interpreted so as to allow a public body to make strategic determination during its closed session deliberations. The board's activity here constituted a mislead about the proper strategic approach to the ongoing negotiation. I think that is pushing it as far as you could possibly push it. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, Koko says it's-
It's similar because he announced the decision.
Right.
That's, that's the-
Well, he would say it wasn't a decision, he just said that the majority felt this way.
Which is announcing-
It's a decision.
I know. Again-
As opposed to saying, "We will go out into open session and we will now have a vote."
The plan to hold firm for the offer 2% reflected the board's strategic goal in this negotiation, but was not a final determination effective public policy. The city attorney, Calabazoo, says he uses this decision effectively in some of the things they do there. I would, I would use this only with advice of council. Township supervisor addresses the planning commission with enough other county board members in attendance to equal a forum. So they've got township officials there, there's a forum there, the township supervisor addresses the planning commission, have they inadvertently convened an open meeting? Because they got a forum. Again, the court said, in this case, "No." Supervisor's comments did not constitute deliberations, the board members did not exchange any affirmative or opposing views. Supervisor just made statements. I think probably, again, a close call, really had the supervisor's comments. But if you're in that position, you should probably not be in that position, because how do you know, we're going to explain it over the line? And the court's going to say, "No, you deliberated, you know." It's tough.
It is tough, though, because debate the matter and issue, which means the first time you ask a question, you debated the matter. Isn't it true that if we ask that, why won't happen? You just debated the issue.
I, I think so.
Now, is simply being present an issue?
No.
Okay. Because I, I've not-
Maybe the perception, and that's why, that's why this ended up in court, because somebody perceived, the public perceived that the school board had, the township board, had convened an illegal open meeting. I'm guessing what happened is that it was a very important township issue. It wasn't a properly noticed meeting to discuss that issue. And the public felt that, wait a minute, you can't make a decision on that issue when you've got a planning commission going on. That's not the place to do it. Township board needs to discuss it so these people can be there and listen to what goes on. I think that's, I'm guessing that's where it occurred.
But if we want to just attend the planning commission meeting and sit there, we can do that?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, seriously, I've been previously told that if there are more than three council members in a planning commission meeting, somebody has to get up and leave.
That's a suitable decision.
Even if no one's talking?
No.
Because it has to do with not being posted.
I give clarification from your city attorney.
And also, it depends on communities. I am in one, and I know of communities whose council rules say members may not attend other board commission.
Okay.
Because even though we don't say anything, there's a appearance that you're there. They say, "Well, but I'm only there as a home report." That's not true.
Okay. I find myself in this difficult situation where people will say, "Well, we want to see your faces at things." Okay?
I know, but it doesn't have to include other boards.
No, other boards want to see our faces at things. They would like me to come and smile and nod, which is-
See?
Okay.
That's why you shouldn't go. Because if you smile and nod, you're giving an opinion of what's going to happen when they come here and present to you.
Okay.
That's exactly, I'm sorry, that's exactly correct about the non-verbal communication. That's the danger. It's a twofold perceptual danger. One is that people deceive, you know, X number of council members, anyone that's down here that's going on. But second, more importantly, I think, are you going to just do that? I mean-
Well, that's where, like, is it deliberation to say, "There's the Boy Scout thing, we've been asked to go."
You raised the issue of other boards and commissions. I'm not talking about a Boy Scout thing.
Well, they're, the community building development team, or the library board, or the, you know, the libraries-
You have white members in the library board, don't you?
Some of them. And they'll, you know, "We're having this summer reading thing, and we'd like you to come, sit in a dunk tank." Like, I did that.
Um, Perry?
Well, what she's referring, most of us are on multiple boards. So for two of us to be on that side, or three of us to be on that side in a different place, or two of us are on this side, I think that's kind of what she's getting at.
Well, I'm just saying, I asked to show up at stuff, just to, like, seem like I care that it's happening. And I'm okay with that, but I'm being told that, like, we should make sure that there's never more than three of us that do that.
Well, that, it helps, it keeps you safe.
Okay. Now, the next thing is, is it acceptable for us to have a discussion, like, via email, saying, "Are you going?" Because how do I know if they're going if I don't ask them?
Well, I'm not sure that particular decision would be one that a public body would, you know, normally take up. I don't know that that particular, you're deliberating towards making a decision, but maybe that's a little bit like that decision to leave a closed session where, I can't remember the phrase, it'd be, A G U's pretty good. You know, that might fall into that. But again, the perception is so important, and again, if you, is the public perceiving that, you know, a forum of a council or a bunch of council, just influential council members are always at this, does the public think, "You guys are controlling everything?"
No, I don't think that.
But are they perceiving that?
I don't know. I, we keep being asked to show up to various different things.
And, and as Koko indicated, if you are non-verbally, you know, people are going to look at you, you're in front of a guy.
Right. I understand that.
If you're being non-verbally doing whatever, if you're real friendly with somebody, the chair of the whatever committee after the thing, I mean, I don't know.
That's why I'm asking.
The social, I sent the open meetings act message very clear. I think you are confusing social activities, like the Boy Scouts and a parade, and, well, you should just all, all go, all the time, with boards and commissions that are going to come before you with requests. Those are two entirely different organs. Well, as far as going to things, you're supposed to go to things and have ribbons, kiss babies. I prefer this, Emma, but, yeah.
I, I, I'm with you.
The thing is simply, I think Bill is asking you to think about the perception. You could all go to the parade, just don't all walk together.
Right. So, like, if the library has a summer reading program-
Go.
And they want us to-
But don't go to the library board meeting and smile and nod.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to clarify. So if they ask us to come to the summer reading program party, we don't need to post that as a, because we just did this. I mean, and we posted it as a meeting. So because there were more than three people that wanted to go.
I think you need to have a discussion and set a council rule on this issue.
Like a policy?
I think you need to establish a policy on this.
Okay.
It's not common for this to be such a big deal, and the fact that it is such a big deal for you says to me that you should have a conversation and set a policy.
Yeah, well, I'm mostly going off of, like, the manager's direction.
Well, I think-
I'll agree to something.
You know, I think you're trying to be very safe, and I think that's good. Again, you can't get in trouble generally if you're posting meetings, and then that's good. You know, it's a little more of a work and it's a little bit cumbersome, but it's a good way to insulate yourself. So, when in doubt, post it.
Okay.
You know, that's a safe approach to take.
So it's totally appropriate to say, "The city council will be at the summer reading celebration, celebrating the library."
I don't know. But again, why don't you, you know, get your manager and your attorney, and maybe you can get some kind of overall guidelines together so that you've got an understanding? That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
And hopefully you can kind of differentiate between purely social and those things that aren't purely social. Well, you're social civic versus, as Koko says, you know, other boards that may come here or certainly process business or decisions that come through the city or made for the city, or you actually ultimately have to, have to make a decision. I think that would be helpful, and everybody could be a little more comfortable with it. I'll probably have, I'll- Oh, these are sort of competitive, let's keep moving the law on. This is sort of a, this is really a FOIA question, but it kind of involves council meetings, so I thought I'd keep it in. You've got a camera going, recorder was left on by mistake. In the city hall, it's city property, city video. Question is, is that thing subject to FOIA? Because it happened after the city council meeting was adjourned properly, camera was left on by mistake.